Next item, Mike.
Under Policy None Submitted Operations District Safety Initiatives, this presentation will provide an overview of current district safety initiatives and recommendations for future facilities upgrades and program enhancements. This presentation is for the Board's information.
Apparently, we're contagious. Welcome and good evening.
Hello. Thank you all. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Terry Moses. I'm Director of Safety Services for the Wichita Public School District. I came to the Wichita Public School District about five years ago, and a year after I got here, we did an overview of safety services for the Board, just to educate you. I give you great, great prompts for the vast amount of things you have to know in order to be a Board of Education member and to know what's going on in the school district. So, we thought we'd take this opportunity to give you a little bit more information, what's going on in regards to safety services. I'm gonna start this by saying two things. First of all, it takes all of us, and I'm incredibly fortunate to have this great team of you and these people sitting behind me and to my right. Like I said, I've been here for five years, and I've been incredibly impressed with the staff and how, when we talk about safety, they're engaged, they're concerned, and they're willing to make changes. The second thing I'll tell you is that we aren't there yet, and we will never be there yet. I often get asked by people, "Hey, have you done all you can in regards to safety and security?" And I, like you, have to answer that question, no. Our world is constantly evolving and changing, and if we don't constantly evolve and change and meet the needs of our world, then we're falling flat. And you see that by what you were just presented by Michelle, and hopefully you'll see that in what we're presenting to you today. You know the vision statement, but the reason I put it up there is not for the vision statement, but it's for the next one, and that's your goals. You created a series of goals, which I think are wonderful. When you watch leadership programs, they always say you need to know not just who you are, but where you're going. And we are very, I personally, think you were very forth, forward-thinking when you added the fact that schools are trusted as a safe places in one of your major goals. You know there's a lot of issues in regards to safety out there in schools right now, and I can tell you that not every school district has a major written goal of safety. We are one that does. And I think that sends a message to our community, and I think it certainly sends a message to our staff, as you as school Board members value this very much, to put this as a goal in the ones that you recently created. So, my big thank you to that for recognizing that. What makes schools safe places? Relationships. A lot of people, they come to me and they talk about bricks and mortar and security and all that stuff. What Dr., what Michelle Ingeand Thor just presented to you is a big part of safety. That cultural, safe climate where we value people, that is so much a part of safety. So, unlike what people think when I give a presentation, the number-one thing about safety is relationships. Family partnerships, you heard that when you were talking about drugs. Certainly, engaging the family and being involved with the family is a big part of safety as well. Positive school climate and culture, again, reinforcing the idea that we want schools to be a welcoming place to everybody, every day. Then we get down to secure school grounds, the bricks and mortar and what we do on a daily basis in terms of what we build around our students and our staff and our community to support them. And we have taken on this saying, we use it in everything we do in public safety, especially here in the schools, and that is if you see something, say something. You're gonna hear me say that a couple of times tonight, but if you ever sit through one of my presentations at a school, if you watch our Run, Hide, Fight video, you'll see that it starts and ends with see something, say something. Things will happen in our community, and it is very important that we create an environment where everybody, students, staff, parents, feel comfortable reporting stuff to us, to a trusted adult. And again, that goes back to that relationship. When I talk to parent groups, I tell them every single student should have three to five trusted adults in their life that they can go to. Mom and dad might be busy, their one trusted adult might be busy, but they need to have somebody in life that they can go to. And that's what that see something, say something. Safe schools, it's up to all of us. This is a little diagram that we use in public safety. There are five parts to public safety, and we're gonna kinda go through all of them today. I'm gonna start with prevention and using a analogy of a car. Prevention, you buy a car and you put good tires on it. Good tires are going to decrease the likelihood that an event will happen. In other words, you're gonna stay on the road. Protection in that car, you're gonna have a seatbelt, and that protects you in case something does happen. Mitigation in that car, you're gonna have a solid steel frame or a state-of-the-art frame that even if something does happen, it's going to reduce the injury or the damage to your car when that happens. And we do know that things are going to happen, and so we have to be able to respond. And the response is the actions that are taken when that crisis happens. How do we respond to it? And finally, we all too, know all too well, here in our district, we have to recover. Things like College Hill, Marshall, you're going to have issues that occur in buildings, and we have to work together and have a recovering plan that allows us to return back to normal as soon as possible. So, those are the kind of the five stages of crisis, both prevention, all the way to recovery. And there's one big thing that I put on top of that, and that's the all-hazards approach. We have to look at things from every different side. And the example I give you, you all remember from your history teachings back in the early 1900s, people in the large cities, New York, Chicago's, were so afraid of their houses being broken into, things being taken away from them, that they fortified their homes with steel bars and plates on the doors, and the results was we had mass casualties when fires happened. And so, when we take an all-hazards approach to these items, we have to make sure that what we do to stop one threat doesn't cause more of a threat or more of a problem in another area. And that's where we come with teamwork. We have to look at things from an all-hazards approach, not just a single hazards approach. So, I'm gonna go through these in that order, prevention, all the way down to recovery, and things that we do here. Prevention education, we do suicide awareness and prevention training. Two years ago, the State of Kansas mandated suicide awareness training. I think, again, the State of Kansas was being rather proactive. If you are aware, just last week, State of Kansas was listed by the Centers for Disease Control, one of the states with the highest rising suicide rate. That is true mainly of a middle-aged group, but certainly, we need to be aware of it, so we do suicide awareness and prevention training. Our Student Support Services staff does a really good job of providing services to people, where we do need to make people more aware. Again, that trusted adult, having somebody that you can go to when you're dealing with issues. We know with suicide, one of the biggest issues is taking that first step. There's still a very big stigma associated with mental illness, and we've gotta remove that stigma, and that means making ourselves more welcoming and listening to people. We have a district-wide bullying plan that you're aware of. Again, making sure people know that the issues are out there in regards to that positive school climate. Very timely. Drug prevention education and intervention resources, they are out there, and like I said, we can never do enough. And certainly, this is an area that nationwide, the opioid problem, again, we're seeing it out there. We're lucky here in the Midwest that we don't have the numbers that they have in some other areas, but I think everybody knows what happens on the coasts. Sooner or later, it's gonna come to the Midwest. Gang prevention and resource information, threat of procedures and scenario training are all things that we do to try to make sure that our staff are as well-informed as possible to be able to meet the many needs of our students that we have out there. Also on prevention, last month, we sat here and we heard a very well-presented program from Dr. Irving and Mr. Garner about the Second Struck Curriculum, but again, designed to make that positive school culture. On the same thing with Champson Achieve, programs that this school district has put together to help students as they deal with the many difficult problems in regards to just learning how to get along with people. Trauma-sensitive practices, again, I just glanced at the information that was given to you earlier, but you saw ACES in there. Adverse Childhood Experiences is what that stands for, and we know there's a lot of new and upcoming research in regard to that, and we are working within the district to make sure that we know as much as we can about trauma-sensitive practices. And of course, you know the opening of the Bryant Academy is gonna give us another place or another resource that students who need that additional sport have to go to get the sport they need to be successful. Moving on to protection, that seatbelt. We secure our school grounds. We use a visitor management system. Several years ago, we purchased a system that allows us to account for everybody that's entering our buildings. Every adult in our building should either have a BOE name tag, or they should have a picture tag on their lapel. That makes it very simple for staff and students to know, hey, these people have been checked and they belong in our buildings. It alerts us for non-authorized, both sex offenders and banned visitors. It's photo visitor badges, and it gives us a way to also volunteer track. Crime prevention through environmental design is one of those fancy terms, SEPTED, that comes from my years in law enforcement, but it is a very important one, such as things such as lighting, shrubs. Do we have our visibility blocked because somebody planted a beautiful tree, but they put it right in the wrong spot? Those are the kinds of things that we look at, just even our bus routes, how they come and go. Fabian back here and his staff do an excellent job of making sure as best we can that we take kids driving cars over here and we put buses over here and the two shall not meet, because that's kind of an important thing when you've got kids learning how to drive. All those kinds of things are SEPTED, or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, safety things. Facilities improvements, we've done a lot, safe rooms, of course, as a part of the bonds, doors, radios, cameras, fences, intercoms. All those kind of things are so important to the physical safety. We continue to look at ways that we can provide those to enhance the safety of our buildings. Secured entries, we presented this a couple of years ago. The picture we have to the side is where we would love to be at all of our schools, and unfortunately, because of the age of some of our buildings, we've not been able to do that. But the picture there shows a school entrance. The door's right above it, then would be locked after school starts, and you would be forced into the office before you can enter a school. Those schools that don't have that kind of flexibility, because the office is located further into the building, have a camera code, or a camera at the front with a buzzer. Any visitor has to come to the school, press the button, has to be greeted by somebody, and then they're buzzed in. But our go-to and where we would like to be is where we have an office pass-through, or it forces you to need the office before you actually go into the building. Once you're buzzed in with a camera entry, you're asked to go to the office, and most people do. Sometimes the cupcakes get delivered straight to the school classroom, and we would rather have them go through the office, of course. And finally, we've got fire code compliance, that's a big one that comes up every year. We're very fortunate to have a great working relationship with our fire department, and the people at facilities do a great job making sure that when we do talk about enhancements to security, that you make sure that fire code compliance is in there. Again, when we go to, back to safe rooms, it'd be a lot easier to build safe rooms if you didn't have to worry about fire code. But you've gotta worry about both when you build those things, and I know, Julie, you're very well aware of that. Protection also, we're very fortunate, we have a safety services department that's staff 24/7. I do believe we are one of the few, if there may be the only one, that we accept calls 24/7. We have a live body that will answer the phone 24/7. That's come in very, very useful to parents, when they have a student that contacts them in the middle of the night at 2:00 a.m. and say, "I just received a text message from my friend who says they want to hurt themselves." Having that comfort of knowing that they have somebody that can call, that will involve the right people 24 hours a day, is certainly an advantage that we have. And of course, we alarm all our buildings and we monitor that 24/7. We patrol our 84, or 98, sorry, 98 district sites 24/7. Other things we do with metal detection, we scan at our events, all of our large events, football, basketball, graduation, and of course, as necessary. So, we have enough metal detection or scanners to allow us to do that on a limited basis. Also, protection, crisis plans for every district building, every single building, the principal. We have a template that we give them, and every single principal at the beginning of the year sits down with a group of people and decides who's in charge of what. So, we know that, hey, this is your responsibility, that's your responsibility. We also require yearly crisis drill at each attendance site, and we also do them at our non-attendance sites, too. I just put attendance sites up there. We're required by law to do fire and tornado drills. We are not required to do any other drills, but we do require them. We require them. We require three other drills a year. This year, in the past, we have asked people to just kind of pick and choose which drills they choose to do, whether it's an evacuation drill, some type of tabletop. This year, we're mandating that everybody does a run, hide, fight drill. Three years ago, we did create the Run, Hide, Fight video training process. I can tell you that has been very well-received. We have received, every single year, we get requests from other districts to use that video. It is so well-done. We got one today from a university in Ohio who wants to use our video for their training program. So, great, kudos to Jennifer and the people up there in the booth, as well as Wendy and Susan, and I can see Jennifer looking at me, for the job they did putting that together. It is really, it is used worldwide. We did receive one call overseas, at least I know, for people using that video, because there are just no K-8 information out there. Mitigation, staff train and de-escalation skills. We know that situations are gonna occur. People are gonna get upset, people are gonna get angry. We have to have the ability to de-escalate, and so we train them to do that. We know that things are going to happen. You're gonna have hailstorms, tornadoes, car accidents, bus accidents, fights. And so, there has to be a mass notification tool so that people like you, as well as our external community, are informed in regards to what's going on. Mental health services, very, very important. When you talk about that, trauma-sensitive schools, we have to have the mental health services, and of course, you know that we're working to expand those this year. Staff trained in emergency response, we don't have a requirement for most of this training, but we know that many of our staff self-train in the areas of CPRs, AEDs, first aid. We have worked, and we've been very, very lucky, Wesley Medical Center has partnered with us, and we have trained many of our elementary schools in a new program called Stop the Bleed. And basically, that focuses on exactly extreme bleeding events, and we're very fortunate that Wesley has used their staff to come out and train our staff at no cost. Another important mitigation is the anonymous tip line. That's where we get those phone calls, that somebody's thinking about harming themselves, something's going on that's inappropriate, and we call it our Speak Up Program, and we're very fortunate to have a great partnership with Wichita Crime Commission that helps us with that, and several people within the Wichita Crime Commission are very, very helpful with Speak Up. The last one I have on there is Go Kits, and that's just the idea that we put together enough information in every single classroom. There's either a red folder, or there's, at some point in the school building, there's actually a duffel bag. The red folder is right by the door, and when you run out the door, it gives you enough information that you can respond to just about any emergency. It has information on gas leaks, it has information on fires, it has information, so even someone, and we talked about substitute teachers earlier, but even someone with very little information or maybe who's really just stressed out, here's a real quick guide in regards to what you can do to get through this in extreme emergency situation. Response, we know things are going to happen. We work with our local public safety officials on any incidents that involve these. Of course, we have our initial responders, which is our district security, our crisis team members, and of course, our mental health crisis team members. One of the things I quickly learned when I came here, unfortunately, that staff, students, parents are involved in extreme situations, and many times, we have deaths of those. And when we're dealing with young children who really don't know how to handle grief, maybe it's their first time dealing with grief, it's a tremendous asset to our district that we have a mental health team that goes out and helps kids as they work through those processes. They do it immediately, and they also do it long-term, so we provide support to children. And of course, we have our community first responders, police, fire, and EMS. Very fortunate, Bel Air Police Department, Wichita Police Department work out with us very well, as well as Wichita Fire Department, EMS, Sedgwick County Fire Department, we have great relationships with all of those. We have reunification plans for all of our students and families. The times that we've had gas leaks, the couple times that I've been here, we have great partners in our community that give us sites. Many of them are churches, some of our other schools. Just last year, when we had a fire at Franklin, kids went straight over to Allison, plopped them in an auditorium like this, put a video on, they were happy campers. But we knew where they were. We had an evacuation site, we had a plan, we had somewhere to go. And it's little things like that that it actually creates a lot of work in the crisis plan, but certainly gives us a great deal of comfort, because we know where our kids are gonna go. Every single one of our buildings has a, both a primary and a secondary evacuation site. And of course, we follow mandatory reporting procedures when there's a reason to suspect that a child has been harmed as a result of physical, mental, or emotional abuse or neglect, as required by state law. And again, our partners there are DCF and law enforcement in regards to working with those types of situations. Recovery, over on the right side of the deal there, I won't lead them all to you, but there's everybody something back here. Every single person is involved in recovery. I remember very, very vividly after we had College Hill, it happened on a Monday afternoon, and all of these people over here met over in the library before and after this BOE meeting so that we could prepare for recovery. Everybody had an idea, everybody was prepared, everybody knew what their resources were, what they could provide, and we were able to get a learning environment very quickly created so that in a very short period of time, we could return to normal. And that's what it says, return to learning quickly as possible. And of course, we provide the mental health services that go along with that, and one of the most important things that we do is we conduct debriefings. So, after we have any type of event that's considered even kind of moderate or major, we're gonna sit down, like the fire at Franklin, we're gonna sit down and say, okay, what worked good? How did we handle that well? What were things that were some obstacles? How can we improve? Because the only way you're gonna get better is to sit down and have a real, honest conversation with the people involved about what worked and what doesn't work in regards to an emergency response. So, certainly, it's very important to have those debriefings. Our recommendations for the future is to promote the trauma-sensitive practices in 259 schools. Again, that is a very up-and-coming, and I think what Michelle presented to you tonight goes along with that same kind of philosophy, that we've gotta be very sensitive to culture, we've gotta be very, very sensitive to the trauma that kids bring to school. Provide enriched prevention training, we continue to do that, we will continue to do that. In terms of, just like what we heard tonight, we're always looking at ways to improve drug education, suicide prevention awareness, anything we can do. We already talked about the Bryant Academy, enhancing facility safety. We are constantly looking at ways that we can enhance the safety of our buildings. Like I said, cameras, fencing, recently, you just approved the fencing for middle schools, or I'm sorry, for elementary schools. People get on our playgrounds, and people do unfortunate things on our playgrounds. So, not only have we, it cost us a lot of money in terms of burning a couple playgrounds, but it also is a safety issue in regards to what people leave on our playgrounds. So, we think that fencing is a very important tool, and we appreciate you moving forward with that. We're gonna expand the requirements of our crisis drills. Like I said, we're gonna mandate that everybody do a Run, Hide, Fight drill this year, and we're gonna continue to look at ways we can do those even better. And that's, we even debrief after we do our drills, and we talk to people, make sure, hey, I understood this, I couldn't do this. For example, last year, we did a drill out at SSC. There happened to be somebody, a group of people, that were in the Pride and Nutrition Services in an office up there, they couldn't hear the intercom. Had they not been there at the time that we did that drill, we would not have known that. But that's what that debrief is for, is so that when we do do the drills, we sit down and say, hey, I didn't hear that, I didn't know what's going on. So, ways to improve those kind of things. Again, cultivate multiple mental health partnerships. We're on the road to that with the partnership that's been created through the State of Kansas with Calm Care. And of course, we have to involve all of our stakeholders, both internal and external. Like I said, when I started this, this is not a singular group of people that provides safety your district, it is everybody that provides safety to your district. Our partnerships, like I said, everybody over there. We're very fortunate to have great working relationships with our local law enforcement agencies. Even the State Board of Education has taken steps to help us in regards to safety. Calm Care, I talked about in terms of mental health. Crime Stoppers has helped us, that's the Wichita Crime Commission. Our media, great, that's how we get our information out, that's how we share information, so we're appreciative of them. People like our Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, we really focused on reducing the number of arrests that we have in our schools, creating that positive climate, trying to help kids problem-solve rather than taking them to jail. 911 and emergency management, of course, and I already said, the Wichita Crime Commission. And there's so many other community coalitions and organizations that we work with on a daily basis that I couldn't even begin to list them all, but we wanted to make sure that you know that it is a partnership with a lot of other organizations. So, again, thank you very much for ensuring that schools are trusted as safe places by students, parents, staff, and the community. I think you took a great step in the right direction as listing this as one of your long-term goals for the Board of Education. Thank you.
You're popular, you have a lot of people wanna talk to you.
Here I am.
Well, let's start with Stan.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Moses kind of brings me back to the early 90s when you and I both worked on the rising crime scene that we had in Wichita, and the whole question was, how do we stop this? And so, I think this is a very, and here we are, 2018, and now we get asked the same question, how can we stop violence in school at times, or non-safe, non-safety issues? And what we were trying to get out to the public then was, do not look for a single solution. There is not a ticket we can, you know, there's not a certain number of police officers we can hire that will just automatically make this problem go away. And we talked a lot about prevention. So, I'm glad you spent a great deal of time on, because this is exactly the same thing as what cities face when they have to reduce crime, or try to reduce crime, is you cannot just hit it in one area. And then, I love the amount of time you're spending on recovery and review of situations, whether it's a fire situation or whatever, in our schools, and that we can constantly review and try to learn. And I think that is one reason why Wichita has been seen as a very safe place. I know, I never worried about it, the whole 20-year span I had, my three daughters through the Wichita Public Schools, is because if you do look at Wichita's public schools' safety record, it's very good. And it's not because of one single person, it's not because of one superintendent, it's not because of one school board, it's because it's a team effort and because it's a 360 process. My only specific question is, in the future, do you, well, let me say it this way. I'm asked many times by constituents, what can they do to help me to help any situation with school safety? And I always tell them, and this is what my question is, is maybe you have a different way for me to say it, I always say to them, please let your elected officials understand that any money that schools have to spend on school safety, additional monies, that should come from a source that does not take away from school, the basic work of school, and that is achievement, getting kids ready for the world. Every time we take a piece of pie out of that area, and if our elected officials above us in the city, in the legislature, and the Congress do not, if they think we have to take that money out of our existing pie, then they have to expect that achievement will go down, that things will, other areas will go down, building maintenance, things like that. So, am I wrong on that, in that if when we are asked as public officials, how can they help, is that answer adequate? Or do you think we ought to say something else, or?
I think you said it very well. I think that's a priority. I think the other thing that we need to talk to, especially parents, about is that school climate, talking to their kids, making sure their kids know how to respond, making sure their kids aren't just posting things on Facebook, they're telling that trusted adult. Another things that we talk about in terms of both suicide and school shootings is lock up your guns. We heard about locking up drugs. Parents should really try to very much create a safe environment for their kids at home and their kids when they're out there on the street. So, there's a lot of things that parents can do, but I think you said it very adequately in regards to, in terms of your position in the school board. We need funds to improve the safeties of our buildings, but don't take it away from our instructional quality.
Thank you.
Ben.
Thank you, Mike. So, I wanted to thank you and your staff for providing this extensive presentation that talks about all the various things we are doing in the district right now, as well as some future work to do. Because I read, and of course, don't quote me, or I can't Because I read, and of course, don't quote me, or I can't bring you a citation of when I read it, but I read that the safest place for a child is within the four walls of a public school. And that's bar none, that's nowhere else are they safer than. And the reason that is, is because of the work of everyone in this room, and everybody in the district, and the partnerships that we have going. And so, you know, it's not an accident, it's daily work all the time. And so I appreciate that. And as well, I wanted to commend yourself and your direction in making sure that as we implement these various security measures, it doesn't take away from the warm, welcoming environment of a public school. My little and I have managed to go to a bunch of schools in District 1. And for a lot of times, it's the first time we've ever been to that building now as an elected official. But just going in there for like a music program with a bunch of parents, it's an extremely warm and welcoming environment. And so thank you for maintaining that.
Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you bringing out the statistics do show, and I know it's very hard when the media focuses on the negative, but statistics do show you're exactly correct. In terms of our buildings, how they're built, they're incredibly safe. And students are safe within our buildings. That doesn't mean we can't work, stop working on improving that. And I think you are right, making it a welcome environment is very important.
Julie.
I want to reemphasize the fact that it takes a team, you know, it takes a village, as we'll say. And I am the board's representative on the district crisis team. And so get to see firsthand on a regular basis the crisis team members, your office, your staff, and then the commitment of our administrators in this district. Just the great commitment that our district does have towards safety and the priority that is placed on it. And I want to thank you for your leadership and that of all of our administrators.
And I thank you for that. And I, again, I can't emphasize enough how much it is a team thing, and I appreciate you bringing that out as well.
Ron.
Going back on prevention, the ACE, what was that?
Adverse childhood experiences. And you're going to hear that more, I think, in the research. It's basically the trauma care, the trauma-informed care. But that's what ACEs stands for.
And then who's, I guess, who's overseeing it? Is it the administrators or teachers?
I'm going to say the big bosses.
Oh. Thank you.
Terry, you talked about Speak Up, and I realized, talking to you the other day, that Speak Up is actually in our F-School app that's on an iPhone that makes it very easy to contact and report or get help. And I don't think a lot of people realize that. That's one of our hidden secrets that we probably ought to talk about a little bit more.
Dr. Thompson has pointed that, actually, the kids pointed out to this. We did safety as a part of a super SAC. And some of the kids say, hey, I know about Speak Up. Another one said, I'd never heard about it. And so it really reinforced to us the need to advertise that and make sure that we get the information out. Again, one of our key partners with that is the Wichita Crime Commission, and they've agreed to pay for some advertising dollars for us to add banners, and also a portion of that for the social media advertising. You and I may be more comfortable with banners and magnets. Our kids are a little more comfortable with that, social media. So this coming school year, you should see more on social media in regards to advertising Speak Up.
Would it be fantastic. And I do appreciate what you guys are doing. I did talk to Dr. Thompson in December about this very subject and how I didn't want to be the one on the microphone explaining why we had a problem. And I think we, as a district, have taken a very good stance. After watching one of the TV channels exposes on school security, all the schools that they interviewed, none of them held a candle to what we're even trying to do, which makes me feel like we're in the right path and we need to keep moving forward.
And I actually agree, and I think that right there sends a very, very strong message, that you have recognized it as a priority goal. And I thank you again for that.
Stan.
I'm sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to ask this the very first time. So what's the difference between see something, say something, and speak up?
See something, say something is just a phrase that's actually created by the U.S. Secret Service that, hey, you see something out of place, tell somebody. Don't take it for granted that somebody else is. Speak Up is actually a program where we have a phone number, we have a text number, and it's an anonymous reporting program. It's very synonymous with Crime Stoppers on a nationwide basis. We don't pay for tips. And crimes kind of, Crime Stoppers kind of connotates a negative. We only want you to report kids that are doing bad things. With Speak Up, we want information about kids that are having difficulty, kids that are suicidal, kids that maybe are being abused at home, that we aren't getting that information. So Speak Up is an anonymous program that allows anybody to give us information. It's actually, the phone is taken to a reporting center, it's 24 hours a day. We get the information 24 hours a day, and we respond 24 hours a day. I know.
Thank you, I'm glad I asked that question, because that actually clarifies it for me.
You know, for a cellphone-savvy guy like me, I got Speak Up on my phone, and I'm surprised that none of you do.
I do not.
So.
It's there.
Would you cut that out of there? Isn't there a five second delay? Terry, thank you for everything you guys do, and appreciate the staff and everything. We appreciate what you guys are doing, really.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much.